All right. I'd like to convene the meeting of the Board of Education for Wednesday, May 9th, 2018, and we will begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor? Aye. Post? All right, board reports, Rama is taking exams, so Mrs. Weaver, you're up first.
All right, so, we have all been extremely busy. Things are, you know, all these award ceremonies and, you know, different functions at the end of the school year. I've been dividing my time between, my son's a senior, so I've had an enormous amount of things going on with his, his different awards, and also, I apologize if I don't make it to some of the other things, but, you know, but I have, you know, like I said, we've all been going through an enormous amount of things. But what I would like to do right now is, instead of telling where I've been this past week, I wanted to talk about Nurses Week. As you all know, I am a nurse, and I wanted to recognize some of my, three of my favorite nurses that were my coworkers when I worked in the emergency room and when I worked on behavioral health. So, to my friend, my good friend Cherry Delahay, who is a nurse at Fear Lead, Amy Howe, who her and I worked on our master's program together, we commiserated, we rode up to Baltimore, you know, every week for our master's program together. She is a teacher at the Allied Health over at the Tech Center, and to Bonnie Skinner, who I worked in the emergency room with, each, each, she's also a teacher over at the Allied Health over at the Tech Center. Each one of these nurses that I have worked with are exceptional, extraordinary nurses, and now they are caring for our children, and I know that they are still doing an excellent job there. And I also wanted to recognize Kathy Allen, who I am now on the board with, working with her, and once a nurse, always a nurse, Kathy was an intensive care nurse prior to being on the board, so happy Nurses Week, and I do see some other nurses out there, so.
Mr. Davis?
I attended the NROTC Awards Banquet last week, and I had the privilege for the first time to witness a very impressive young group of folks that were showing great discipline and precision in their military actions. The American Legion was represented, various veterans groups, I believe the Masons were also there, awarding some of the outstanding achievements of our young cadets, so that's all right.
Let's see, I've been to, I attended the award ceremony down at Great Mills High School along with Jim and the other members of the board. Let's see, I'm gonna tout our upcoming meeting with the, joint meeting with the Commissioners of St. Mary's County on June 12th. Dr. Smith and I met with Dr. Bridgett and Commissioner President Randy Guy and Commissioner Mike Hewitt a week ago Monday to discuss what our agenda's gonna look like for that. And just so everyone's aware, because I did mention it the last time, the two of the topics on that agenda will be the new bill that was passed for school safety, and then the plans for the school system and the Sheriff's Department and the county commissioners as to what, you know, we're gonna do going forward to, to harden our schools, and there has been a lot of discussion about that, so that will all be presented at that meeting on June 12th, which I believe is in this room.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
So.
And it was very, obviously a very fruitful conversation that we have with them, and that they pledged yesterday a million dollars to be in a set aside reserve account specifically for school safety hardening measures, so that was, we are very thankful for that.
Mrs. Washington?
Okay. Thank you. I attended the Forest Center Project Gala, and it was a wonderful event. It was from 9:00 to 2:00 PM yesterday, where the seniors had an opportunity to present it, exhibit their projects for the year, and I'll talk about three of the projects of three of the students that I stopped by there staying to talk to. One of our students went to Haiti for 10 days for her project, and it was funded by her church, St. Paul's Church and the Tech Center. She went to Haiti because she realized that the students there were lacking in dental care, so they took dental supplies, toothbrushes, toothpaste, and they were able to educate the students about the importance of dentistry, so it was a wonderful experience for their students. She actually went to Haiti to do her project. Also, another student who's in the case program raised chickens for eggs. She raised these chickens at her home. She say they are free range chickens, and she sells the eggs. She feeds them marigolds, lemongrass, basil, and natural products, and she say the yolk is darker in color and is prettier. So she really enjoys that project. And I was very impressed with the Tech, the Forest Center students, they make their own yearbook. They don't send it to a company, they start from scratch, and they do the whole thing. They said the students pay about $12 for the yearbook, and it's made by the graphics communications students, but two students actually did the project. And I said, "Well, how much does the regular yearbook cost?" And they said about $80, $90, so they're saving the students money by doing their own yearbook, and it looked just as professional as a professional organization would do it, and it was done by students. So I was very impressed with those projects. There were many other projects that I saw, but for the sake of time, I only just talked about three of them, but I stopped by to talk to many of the students. Our students are very talented. The Forest Center is one of the best technology centers in the state of Maryland. We have great instructors and great leadership there, and our students are doing a wonderful job. And if you didn't make it this year, put it on your calendar for next year. It is open to the public, and the citizens can see how the taxpayer dollar is being put to good use, 'cause our students are very creative and innovative. Thank you.
I attended Chautauqua High School's Academy of Finance Financial Literacy Night. It was a great evening. The students in the program, depending on what year they were in the program, were tasked with certain projects they needed to do, and I really enjoyed going around, talking with the students, hearing about their projects, a number of which, for the seniors, they had to come up with a product, develop a business plan, and explain how they would accomplish what they were suggesting. And so, some of the things that they came up with were very inventive. It required them especially to do a lot of research on other countries to be able to determine what sort of a business environment they would encounter should they choose to stand up a business there. And so they really brought in a number of different, different areas so that they could accomplish their goal.
Wonderful. So I was attending all of those incredible events with you, and it's always a joy to spend time with you and all of the people who work with you and we represent. Esperance Middle School, the National Junior Honor Society induction ceremony, Mrs. Washington and I were there for that, that was great. Spring Ridge Middle School musical, Singing in the Rain, what a magnificent performance. It is, it is definitely, it is definitely, it was definitely worth, worth spending the afternoon, really left us very much buoyed in our spirit. The Lenartown High School, their musical, they did it two weeks in a row, Anything Goes? Oh my gosh, the, not only the talents that were displayed by the students, but then all of the people who work around them, the set design on that was just incredible. They took that 1978 Procyneum stage and turned it into a cruise ship and did so in a convincing manner. It was really, it was really quite great. Yesterday, we had, we were all, we all attended the 18th Annual Law Enforcement Appreciation Day at Southern Maryland Higher Ed Center. That's really, that's really wonderful. The people who take care of us, who protect and serve, most appropriate to recognize them, and I, it was a, it was a great, it was a great morning. We finished with the Commissioners of St. Mary's County, their final budget work session, and as the process, the multi-month process draws to a close, and they recognized that once balancing out all other requests against the budget, they had $830,000 of unexpensed anticipated revenue, and thank you very much to Commissioner Mike Hewitt, Commissioner Tom Jarboe, President Commissioner Randy Guy, for voting to allocate $800,000 of that to the St. Mary's County Public School System. That gets us very close to our original request. Work of staff will be over the next week and a half or so to go back through the budget, to take a look at everything, to take a look at all the known money, and then to come before you on Wednesday, April 23rd. I believe, yeah. Sorry. May. Last time I was, I was, I was a month ahead, now I'm a month. It's May, it's 2018. Yeah, so, um, no, 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 please, I want it to be May. May 23rd, we'll come back for your final consideration conversation and hopeful approval, and then that would be forwarded back to the county commissioners, and then they approve the entire budget package categorically in June, I believe on June 12th. So that'll be, that'll be really quite a wonderful.
I think it might be during our joint meeting.
I think that at the conclusion of that joint meeting, it'll actually be, we'll have a great, you know, money, 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 money. But thank, certainly thank you to the three commissioners who, who took action to allocate that, that $800,000 of unexpensed anticipated revenue for us, for our kids, and so just thank you very much. With that, Mrs. Bailey?
All right, so we have National School Nurse Day. Ms. Cheryl Long. Good morning.
Good morning.
It is my privilege to be here this morning with Ms. Patricia Wintz, Supervisor of Health Services, to share and expressing our appreciation for our school nurses. St. Mary's County Public Schools joins with the state of Maryland, recognizing today, May 9th, as School Nurse Day. Our school nurses are an important part of our educational team, bridging the gap between health, wellness, and learning, and are always prepared to respond to any emergency. Both Great Mills High School and Lenartown Middle School experienced events this year where three nurses were first responders. Dr. Smith, will you join me? Will you join us in recognizing these three nurses? St. Mary's County Public Schools recognizes Penelope Michaels, nurse at Great Mills High School, with a certificate of recognition for your outstanding nursing skills in response to a school emergency.
Okay. We're hungers now.
He wants a beer, no.
No, no, you have to stay.
You have to join us. Please join us.
If I have to hug, you have to.
Did you not understand, did you not understand nurse's hug? We are, we are touch oriented.
Absolutely, sure.
Except when you get this face.
Well, this is true.
I'm sorry.
It's better, you have the proof.
St. Mary's County Public Schools recognizes Kimberly Powell, nurse at Lenartown Middle School, with a certificate of recognition for your outstanding nursing skills in response to a school emergency. And St. Mary's County Public Schools recognizes Kathryn Robison, nurse at Lenartown Middle School and Margaret Brett Middle School, with a certificate of recognition for your outstanding nursing skills in response to a school emergency. In recognition of all of our school nurses, Governor Lawrence J. Hogan Jr. has proclaimed May 9th, 2018, as School Nurse Day throughout the state of Maryland. Dr. Smith, will you share the proclamation as we recognize all of our nurses for the important work they do every day to support the success of our students?
You do have a copy of a cheerleader.
I do, I really do.
Okay, 'cause it's really, really small, and.
That's really little.
We'll see. If it looks like I'm making it up halfway through, I probably am. School nurse, you have readers? I'll see. Sometimes fashion takes a backseat. Oh my gosh, look, it's there. Okay. School Nurse Day, May 9th, 2018. Whereas, school nurses promote a healthy and safe school environment for all students and staff. They collaborate with parents, other health professionals, and other school staff to provide services for students that promote optimum health for academic success. And whereas, school nurses provide case management services and actively collaborate with others to build student and family capacity for adaptation, self-management, self-advocacy, and learning. And whereas, school nurses provide the necessary professional expertise to identify, assess, plan, implement, and evaluate the needs of the school community. And whereas, school nurses identify health problems, develop plans, and provide treatment for students with severe health needs, including anaphylactic allergies, diabetes, and asthma, in order that all children can access learning and be safe in school. With the support of school nurses, students with chronic illnesses are able to attend school with fewer interruptions in learning. And whereas, school nurses play an integral role in assisting families to access health care for their children. School health service programs emphasize prevention of disease and promotion of health and health services, health counseling, and health education. School nursing is a specialized practice of professional nursing that advances the well-being, academic success, and lifelong achievement of students. And now, therefore, I, not I, but he, Lawrence J. Hogan Jr., Governor of the state of Maryland, do hereby proclaim May 9th, 2018, as in Maryland, and do commend this observance to all our citizens in the sign by Governor Hogan, Lieutenant Governor, and the Secretary of State. So congratulations very much, ladies. You are the subject matter experts, from nosebleeds to most recently Narcan, you really do it all, and I can't say enough to, not only what you do on daily, but then for exceptional time above and beyond life-saving measures that you have taken, just thank you, thank you, thank you very much.
If I might, I wanna point out to the public that St. Mary's County Public Schools is one of, only one of the systems in the state that have registered nurses in all of our schools on a full-time basis. Many school systems do not supply a school nurse, and if they do, they cover a number of different schools. When Mrs. Washington and I first started on the board, most of our nurses were employees of the Public Health Department here, and it was a time that we felt that they needed to be school system employees, and so over many years, we brought those nurses under St. Mary's County Public Schools as our employees rather than through the Health Department. It was a big commitment on our part, but one that we felt strongly was, was the right thing to do, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
You're still there. Do you wanna sit back down and I'll call you back up?
No, that's okay.
You trying to get your steps in?
How did you know? I'm gonna ask Ms. Egert to do it. Okay, it is my privilege once again to join with Ms. Kate Egert, Supervisor of Student Services, to share and expressing our appreciation for our pupil personnel workers. St. Mary's County Public Schools joins with the state of Maryland, recognizing the upcoming Pupil Personnel Worker Week, May 15th through the 19th. Our pupil personnel workers work with school staff, students, parents, and community members in the identification and prevention of problems that prevent students from achieving at their maximum academic potential. They assist in providing opportunities for all of our children. Dr. Smith, will you join me once again? Us?
See, I'm getting my steps in.
I know, you're getting your steps.
This is actually helping.
As we recognize our pupil personnel workers this morning, and they have all joined us, so I would like to call up Ms. Elizabeth Foot. Ms. Anna Saja Jones. And Ms. Annette Wood. And Dr. Smith, if you'll share the proclamation.
We're such a dignity. Thank goodness, I, you, I'm, thank goodness you have, you don't have like the, you know, the colorful pink, which are, which are nice.
You don't like my pink glasses?
You know that that, you know that, before the end, that'll be me. Thank you. Whereas, Maryland is proud to recognize pupil personnel workers for serving all the children of the people, promoting the opportunity for every child to experience a safe and healthy environment. And whereas, pupil personnel workers are specialists trained to consider and assess the needs of the total child, and serve as a school's liaison with the family, community organizations, and social organizations to foster the child's physical, psychological, social, and intellectual growth. And whereas, purple, not purple, but you could wear purple. Whereas, pupil personnel workers work collaboratively with the resources of the home, school, and community, essential to the good mental, emotional, and physical health of each child necessary to advance effective teaching, learning, and achievement in schools. And whereas, it is important that the people of Maryland honor the unique and essential role that pupil personnel workers play in the personal and academic development of Maryland's children. These dedicated professionals do an outstanding job nurturing the growth, maturity, and responsible, responsibility that adulthood and good citizenship require. Now, therefore, Lawrence J. Hogan Jr., Governor of the state of Maryland, does hereby proclaim May 15th through the 19th, 2018, as Pupil Personnel Worker Week in Maryland, and urge all citizens to join in celebrating this special observance. Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Chadwick, let me read this, and then you can start if you don't mind. You can, you can stand up there, Miller Young. Okay, "The Board welcomes public input on policies and issues affecting our schools. We take this time to listen and consider, but not to comment. This is not the appropriate forum for negative comments or criticisms of individual staff or students. Concerns about individual staff members that cannot be resolved at the level closest to the situation should be directed to the superintendent. This Board will not permit comments criticizing individual staff or students since this is outside the scope of public comment. We also sit as an appellate body in both student and employee appeals. We cannot comment on or have prior knowledge of a case that would influence our ability to deliberate, to maintain the ability of the Board to render a fair and unbiased decision. Comments regarding individual student or personnel issues cannot be presented." You've signed it at the beginning of the meeting, it's, your comment time is limited to three minutes per speaker, and speakers may not yield their time to someone else. If you have anything written, please present it to the Secretary, Ms. Kathy Nancini, and she will make sure that we receive it. It's all you.
Okay, which I did not, a nice one to come and say thank you to Chairman Bailey, Superintendent Smith, the Board, for the progress that Chairman Bailey, you mentioned at the beginning of that on the school safety initiatives, is something I know that it's gonna take a little bit of time to get done, if we want to do it right, let's be a little methodical about it. I'd love to do it tomorrow as everybody else would as well, but we do owe it to do it the right way, not just the quick way. So I wanted to say first, thank you all for that support, I thank the Commissioners, they were here, and certainly if I could offer one suggestion, the June 12th thing, which is good to hear, the meeting with the Commissioners, a couple of forms recently, yeah, you know, and you guys have heard this all the time, we don't get the notes, we don't get it from all the parents who don't know. If you could put it on not only your website, or make, or work to put it on your website, the Commissioner's website, put it on your Twitter feed, use the school systems, email systems that we all get separately as well, from the schools and the principals, things like that, and have them send it out too, if you could just have it up, they could forward their student body. I thought it was certainly, and I'll do my part to get the word out as well, so we can get a good attendance at the 12th, June here. That was all, just wanted to say thank you again, and look forward to, as well, the information on 12th.
Okay, thank you. The consent agenda, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Okay, first on our action item is food and related products, and we do not have Ms. Dorn with us, but we do have Ms. Meline and others. And Mr. Jones. You've left her all at the table alone. Look at her.
They're there if you need them.
If I can find the mouse will be really good.
There we go.
Good morning. How are you this morning? Megan was unable to attend today, so I'm here for her. The Purchasing Office and the Department of Food and Nutrition Services are seeking the Board of Education's approval to procure food items that were competitively bid by the Maryland Public School Food and Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative, which we will call SMCPS is a member of the Maryland School, Maryland Public School Food and Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative. This group, the Cooperative, does competitively, competitively bid food and related items to benefit the child nutrition, food service programs for seven member counties. The contract term, the new contract term is July 1st, 2018, to June 30th, 2019, with options to renew for four additional years. The funding source is the Food and Nutrition Services Enterprise Fund. The first bid, there were two bids that were placed out. The first one is to purchase of food items directly from manufacturers and commodity processing awarded, which would, and awarded to 18 different vendors by Carroll County Public Schools on March 14th, 2018. The second bid is for the distribution of the direct-to-manufacturers items, and additional food items was awarded to Dory Foods Incorporated on April 11th, 2018. Orders are placed weekly with the Food Service Department, and the following week, they are delivered to the school sites. The estimated annual cost for products purchased under these contracts is anticipated at $1,650,000 per year. The actual purchases will vary each year depending upon the school meal program and its funding permits. Carroll County Public Schools is the lead agency for the management of the cooperative and associated procurements. They issued and approved the first contract, the DTM contract, in Feb, they issued it in February of 2018, and then approved, and then they issued the second contract for the distribution in March of 2018. Participating counties must seek local board approval for contract awards issued. And our recommendation is that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented.
Is there any questions?
Okay, so as I was looking down through the bid and the different stipulations and things with the bid, there was a long list of items that could be purchased. Are these the only items, or are there other items that could be purchased on this bid?
Yes, you can, you could, there are change orders that happen all throughout the year as products change or are introduced, as your menus change, or as compliance, you know, changes, you can add, and add items to these bids.
Okay, is there an increased cost of adding other items, or?
No, it's, it's just approved, they, they go through and review the cost and the pricing of those items before they're, they're placed as a change order to the bid and become available. of those items before they're, they're placed as a change order to the bid and become available.
And then I know that it's, it's done on a weekly basis. And go, and from what I understand, goes to the individual schools.
Yes.
Okay, so is there a higher cost going, because it's going to individual schools versus, you know, I know that we do not have a warehouse to do like a large quantity, you know, to put freezer or.
Right, and then actually, if you think about it, if we did, then we would have the cost in-house of transporting that food on a daily basis, and additional vehicles. Yeah, you would have to have additional staff and vehicles to make that happen. Yeah, and all schools have the storage, you know, the storage is there, and, and it's rotated around. And we do look at the menus very closely. This year, we've implemented a new process where we're really looking at what's ordered. It's, it goes through two approval levels before it's ordered, to make sure it's aligning with the menu and what we absolutely have to have.
Now, do each of the schools then place their own order to you who then?
Yes.
Could one school be ordering, let's say they want the, the cheese pizza, and this school is ordering something?
They have to stick to their menu items for that week, for the upcoming week, yes. It's very, it's monitored, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
The only question I have is the comparative cost from last year. Was it millions, could you go back, was it millions?
Oh, to the, was that on the?
It was under the content.
Yes.
Okay, that's per year. How does that compare to the year previous year?
The previous year, we were higher. The cost in FY seventeen was one million six hundred and sixty-six thousand two ninety-five. This year, we are actually coming in probably, right now, we're at one million three hundred and eighty. So we are well underneath. I don't see us anticipating going much more than that. All our costs are, have been, we have booked them all through April. So we just have May and June left, and I estimate, I did a little high side on the estimation to get to the one million three hundred and eighty. So I think we'll come well with underneath, you know, underneath. And most of that is due to our review process, looking at the menus, and being conscientious in the choices that we're making.
Putting your children on a diet.
We hope not. We hope this is really, you know, good for them.
They reevaluate the par levels on their, there you go.
Well, congratulations.
And we hope that this contract, I just want to add, we hope that Dory Foods maybe will introduce some different food items. We've been with PFG Carroll County Foods for a very long time. So we're hoping Dory will, will enhance the menus.
I don't have any questions, thank you very much. Mrs. Washington?
I have no questions, just a comment. The, the food in our Food Services Department, the cafeterias, the food is very good. And the selection has improved over the years with, you have salads and all, just fresh fruits and vegetables, more of those things that we haven't had in the past. And it's more of a menu that the students enjoy. So we'd rather for the students to eat there, where they get a balanced diet, breakfast, and lunch, and snacks for some students, and I think you're all doing a very good job with food services. I saw you at the Forest Center where you were there, at a table, talking to the children about health and nutrition. You had games, you had handouts, and it was very good. So that was for the Head Start Program, that was very good. So you do more than just prepare, order food, you also educate. So thank you very much.
And the funding for this all comes through the revolving fund. So it's as students and staff purchase food, then that money is, is used to pay for the items. Thank you very much, that's all.
All right, with that, may I have a motion for this recommended action item?
I move that the Board of Education approve the use of contract MPSFNPC eighteen dash zero one and MPSFNPC eighteen dash zero two, awarded by Maryland Public School Food and Nutrition Cooperative Program to procure food and food-related products for the school meal program.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? I opposed. Motion carried, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Whitten, our next action item, elevator repair.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this morning, I'm here to present a, and recommend the award of a contract for a full-service elevator and lift repair and maintenance. Background, currently, the school system has ten elevators and twelve wheelchair lift units installed in various schools and offices throughout the St. Mary's County Public Schools. The maintenance agreement shall consist of furnishing all labor, materials, supplies, equipment, travel, supervision, services necessary for reasonable and reasonably incidental to provide preventive maintenance program and repairs in accordance with the original manufacturer's recommendation procedures. This contract basically covers, or provides the flexibility for five groups with routine maintenance, repairs due to normal wear, which are incorporated into base cost, repairs due to negligence, which are outside the base cost, but more of a T and M, time and material basis, and then emergency callbacks, which covers response time and what is expected. Current contract was awarded to Elevator Technologies in two thousand and thirteen. The current contract total is about twenty-three thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars, and that's without uncovered or non-covered repairs, which are outside of normal wear. Previous year expenditures, this is the first time this contract has come to the Board because of the expenditure level.
Getting close.
Yeah, so previous year's expenditures, you can see them from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and seventeen. And then this is a summary of the bid tab, you have the complete bid tab. This is a summary of the total for the elevators, the total for the lifts, the total for the elevator and the lifts, maintenance, repair, contract. Elevator Technologies Incorporated provided the lowest responsive price, and they are the incumbent. So we did use, we followed Board Policy DJC. We did advertise on email on Marketplace on April sixth, it was put on email on Marketplace. The bids were open on April twenty-seventh at two P M, four bids were received, and I showed you the results of those. And we're recommending that the Board approve this agenda item as presented. Questions?
I don't have any questions, but thank you.
Mr. Whitten, do you have any reliability data at all on how the elevators are holding up?
Yes, we, we do record failures. We haven't had any major or concerning failures in quite a few years. The last set of failures we had was about nine years ago, about six years ago, we programmed in the renovation of the elevator at Chopticon High School, which was a mechanical and a lift renovation. It didn't, it addressed some of the interior features, but mainly it was focused on the mechanism. But currently, we don't, I don't foresee anything in the next six years as far as a renovation of an elevator.
Are your elevators predominantly hydraulic?
All of them.
All are hydraulic, okay. They're very reliable usually.
Yes.
That's all I have.
The big unknown we usually run into is carts get pushed into elevators sometimes, and they'll hit the safety strike, and it'll bend the safety strike. And believe it or not, that is the most common failure we have.
Now, Mr. Davis, I have to go set up for the eighth grade formal at Margaret Brett next Friday, and I have to go down in that elevator to the basement. And if I get stuck in there, I'm calling you, because now you've jinxed me. No failures in nine years, right?
Major failure.
Okay, I have no questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
No questions, you answered them.
Okay, and with that, may I have a motion for this action item?
I move that the Board of Education approve the contract award of ITB SMCPS two thousand and eighteen MEM Full Service Elevator Lift Repairs and Maintenance to Elevator Technologies Incorporated ETI to provide services on an as-needed basis throughout the duration of the contract, which has the potential to be valid through May two thousand and twenty-three. The combined annual expenditures for these services is estimated to be thirty-one thousand dollars. However, actual expenditures may vary, and the contract you shall be contingent upon available funding.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor? I opposed, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we have one information item, Ms. McCourt, with our April financial report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Before you is the April financial report. The, the budget was adopted at two hundred and fifteen point six million dollars. Year-to-date revenues received was one hundred and ninety-seven point one million dollars in our balance, on the revenue side is eighteen point four million dollars. We've now received all of our county distributions of revenues, and we're about seventeen percent shy on the state side. Those distributions should be coming forward within the next month. On the expenditure side, we have outstanding encumbrances of fifty-seven million dollars. Year-to-date encumbrances and expenditures are two hundred and seven point nine million dollars, and available balance of nine point six million dollars. And there are no items of concern on the expenditure side. Have any questions?
I have done, thank you.
I have done, thank you.
Thank you. Done, looks good.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. All right, does anyone have anything else? All right, three weeks until the first graduation, everyone get ready, three weeks from today. All right, our next board meeting will be on May twenty-third at six P M, and with that, we are adjourned.